Would you please rise, face the plague?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board, would you please swing some hurt? Give all your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of the evening, that we can make decisions on behalf of our citizens that are pleasing to you and pleasing to them. Just guide us in all that we do, in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, reading an approval of the minutes from the June 15th and 23rd. Page eight, please.
Motion to approve this summary.
Okay, with motion by Wolf. Second, and second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, I'm gonna add on here, um, under... We're gonna do kind of 4.1. And under 4.1, we're gonna have recognition of a student, citizen. Macy Smith. Anything else? Okay. Valid, accept the motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Motion by Pillar?
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, agenda is set. Okay, 4.1. I don't think I've ever had a 4.1 before. Macy, would you please stand up? This is Macy Smith. And she entered into the, uh, an essay to the mayor for a day contest. And this was back in March, I think. Do you remember? I think it was March. And there were, do you remember how many people your age sent letters in?
Several hundred.
Four hundred and fifty, I think. And Macy was chosen as the number one essay in the state for age. So, um, we wanna recognize Macy for that. Nice job. You're not eighteen, are you? Okay, well, they said if you are in June, the spot is open, so you can... But we're gonna, um, give Macy a hundred dollars and pay her bucks, uh, for, to spend in our community, so... That's, uh... Anything you wanna say? All right, just don't let your dad spend money, okay? We appreciate, um, you writing that essay, and congratulations. Good job. The meeting will last at least another hour, so you guys don't have to stay, don't feel like getting up and walking out is, uh, rude or anything, okay?
She wants to present.
Yeah, unless you wanna preside over a meeting. Wanna run the meeting? No? I'd help you, but, okay, all right. Okay, thanks a lot. I'm glad you came. Now, you're gonna be a eighth grader? You'll be an eighth grader this fall.
Josh did say he knew that she was actually writing that, he would've put in there about fixing that water.
Yeah. Obviously, it wasn't out of port of an issue, she was... Thanks for not mentioning. That all communities have water sources for their citizens. All right, five A. Engineers report. Jared, you still there?
I'm here, yeah.
All right.
So I sent up the reports Thursday morning. Um, you probably all have the reports on there, it's five general items. A lot of it's the exact same repeat from, uh, two weeks ago, or excuse me, three weeks ago, five week month this, this month, or last month. Um, street work. So after the last meeting, you recall, we had sent a punch list, not a punch list, excuse me. Contractor completed the substantial completion a year ago, so we sent them a, uh, a list of corrective work item eleven months after completion, uh, inspection. And so we sent that to the contractor. Basically, we're waiting for them to complete those items, so that we can close out the project. Hazen still owes the contractor five thousand dollars of withholding, plus, um, the, the extra concrete work that Pride did, uh, or is, is still going to do. So that's what we owe the contractor still, and, uh, really, we're gonna hold that money until, uh, they satisfactorily, uh, complete the list of, of work. They did request a meeting onsite with us to review a few things. I'll, I'll keep you in the loop when we have that meeting, but, um, we won't... They wanna have it as quick as possible, that they can get their final money at your meeting in two weeks. Other than that, today Hazen, um, should be going down, uh, the path of the special assessment process here this summer, so that they can be finalized and approved whenever the county requires they be done, likely in September, maybe October. Monty would know that schedule better than, than us. Any questions on the street project?
Jared, this is Jason. How close are they to this additional finalized list? Do you have any idea?
On the, on the agenda document that you have from me, uh, page two is the warranty correction list work. The only substantial thing on there is repairing a few concrete panels that, that failed over the winter. And I would say if they show up to do the work, it's one day's worth of work. If, um, maybe two, by the time you do some removal, set some forms, and remove some forms, or, you know, four, but it's not much work. Sounds like they, they may wanna fight about a few of those things, but, uh, I'll just keep track of that, uh, and deal with that. I think we're pretty clear on our expectations with them. We're, we're just sitting here, you know, ready to make the final payment as soon as the work is done.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, all right. So then, just some reminder things on this agenda, they keep on there every month. Who would you want to be televised and will get a chance? Um, expedition state. The, the last thing that's really happened out there is developers, they had a test hole, they had a contractor show up to do that. He hired a testing firm. I have, I've emailed the, the testing company to ask for a copy of their report and their recommendations, and have not gotten anything yet, so I think we just have to sit tight till we know more. I do believe they were going to do some additional testing, potentially some boringing out there. So really, no change as far as that goes, other than monitoring it, then, um, I think not issuing building permits to go out. Corrected, satisfactorily. Water system stuff, this is really the only thing that's changed in the last month, and we have a soil boring report. So, it began in your agenda, ten-page document. Um, I, it didn't, it didn't include the entire thing, but if you, you look through the PDF that Monty sent out, there's about four or five pages there. I'll just spare you the detail, page one on the cover, page two just kinda shows the general location, can't do very well, but we did three soil borings out there, kind of in flat spots. Very consistent soil, um, bedrock, or place stone, good, good solid footing stuff, it's anywhere from six, ten feet deep, depending on, on where you're at. And a, a tank like this with a five-foot-deep foundation. So we think of that way, you know, we're, we're, we're very, very close to a very sound, good foundation of it, excellent spot for the tank. For another reason, we've got good soil, we're in close proximity to the rural water line, we're, um, close to power. We've got a, a landowner that's willing to, um, uh, work the land, and, uh, we've got easements up there. So really, at this point, the, the gist of it is, we think we found a good spot for a tank. The next step would be to put together a legal description, and we'd put a quarter of an acre site and, and acquire the land, um, or an option to purchase the land or something, I guess I'm not sure of the terminology there. Because then, at that point, we would do a, um, environmental review, we'll send environmental, for this site. Make sure there's no ultra-intensive things, there's no wetlands, there's no invasive species, what, you know, whatever the normal environmental review stuff is. We send letters, it takes a couple of months to get them back, and then based on those responses, we'll either have the site cleared of any problems, or, you know, for instance, if we have to have, uh, archaeologists go walk out there or something, that would be the, that would be the next step. We talked about that before. I don't know that that's coming, I just anticipate that that'll probably be something. I would say the next step here, you need to follow up with any one of these three, I'll, I'll probably, um, narrow it down a little bit with a big little box, and send in environmental letters, and work with these guys to, to legal descriptions, so that anyone can, um, get the easement, or, or whatever you need. And I think that's kind of where we were needing to, we haven't started any design work. And we're all monitoring the situation of Buried Dogs Fund, and getting close to that. Any questions at this point?
Anybody? No?
One question, that, so the, the excavation down ten, eleven feet to, to get to that firm foundation, that's pretty commonplace, and then come in with some gravel and stuff like that to, to bring it back up to the level that you wanna start from?
Yes, yes. So, we could do two things, we can just go down to that fifty feet deep and set the foundation there, so that the floor of the tank is five feet below ground, or six feet below ground, or whatever the, whatever the conditions are exactly in that spot, ever, according to, yeah. Putting in a foundation with, uh, having to overexcavate and put in gravel back, or bedding is very common. And we had actually anticipated that we would need a deep foundation, which would be piles, written down into the ground, and, so this is really good news. I think we had budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for deep footing, and we need a, you know, thousand yard gravel or something, we're talking, you know, twenty thousand bucks, or thirty thousand bucks. Which, which showed, I would anticipate, you know, we're already looking good. We found a site that's close, we didn't have to purchase it, so there's cost saves there. Now, having a deep foundation is a good deal, um, so, I don't remember exactly what the opinion of cost was when we started here, but it's things are trending in the right direction as far as, um, of getting better at cost. The next thing I have on my list here is the State Water Commission letter that Monty got. Just to kind of fill you in there, I did touch base with him this month, but just fill in the rest of you. State Water Commission operate on a biennial basis, and they plan projects every quarter. So every three months, people come in with funding requests. You guys got funding back in, in February. And so your money's been appropriated to you. Some of the issues they have with State Water Commission is that cities or rural water districts, or water research districts, or counties, get their money, and then they don't build the projects for quite a long time. Or sometimes they request thirty million, and they only need ten million. I mean, those are extreme cases. But that's a lot of what's going on here, is that they, they probably have plenty of money, it's only they shift the money to the people that are using it. And so there's been some grassroots effort to touch base with everybody, to see who needs it, who's using it, who's not using it, and, and get it in the places where it can be used this year. I think I, I, in the email I sent Monty, I think Woz was requesting thirty million. Well, we're involved in that project, and I can tell you that they're not gonna spend thirty million this year. It's just, it's not practical from a construction standpoint. In the federal mortgage, um, flood diversion, they request hundreds of millions of dollars, and it's not likely that they'll spend all of that this biennial, so it's obligated to them. And anyway, I just, I didn't want you to be alarmed by this, there, like, I, I think you guys have kind of made decisions to close things down, and that's what I recommend you respond to, to State Water Commission with. Anticipated timeline on it is probably not until next year, but early. And they want to move some money around for a little bit, no big deal, but I wouldn't, uh, officially agree to de-obligate anything. That's more for projects that are finished, that, um, you know, have come in under budget, that aren't using their funding, which there are some of those too.
So, so your recommendation is that our response be that we would put it off until 2021? The, uh, the need for those funds? And then, we don't, we don't lose out on anything, it's just like you said, they're reshuffling the monies around, and it will be available to us then in 2021?
Just, just be straightforward with them on your, on your schedule, and say we're looking at next year at the earliest, and that we've already spent some money to do the soil boring, to acquire the site, we're, we're working on it, but it's not gonna be until next year, here. They'll know that. They've also sent the spreadsheet where they wanna kind of know, you know, they've obligated like, you know, one point three million dollars to you, or whatever the number is. They wanna know how fast you're gonna spend it. At this point, you know, you might spend twenty grand in 2020, and then we'd kind of just look at what your timeline is for next year, and project quarterly, how much money you're gonna spend, and when. And that's kind of the secondary thing that they're looking for here.
So would they disperse some this year, and then, uh, the balance next year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. It, it's got the, as you use it, just like the bankrupt quota, um, street project that you guys are doing. You spend fifty grand once a month, you, we email them the cost share reimbursement request, they're gonna, they send you sixty percent of that.
Okay.
So, it's, your project will be open with them until you, uh, spend all the money. Or you come in under, or need more. That's, that's part of the hard thing that they have, is that they've got hundreds of ongoing projects, and don't necessarily know where everything is on every single project. They're just kind of checking into things, and seeing, seeing how, what money's not gonna be needed.
Okay, thanks, Jared.
I don't think you need to sit, but, sorry, go ahead, Jared.
No, I just said thank you.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, every, every project in the state got that same letter. Um, let's see here. Really, uh, only other things I have on my list are the, the streets program project, I don't know if you've had any more correspondence with them or not. If you want my support, I will gladly provide it. You know, I'll review stuff if you want. Just order if you want me to be included in a meeting, scoping meeting with the DOT, project walkthrough, they do a lot of those things right away before they do the survey. I'll be glad to come, um, otherwise, just kind of helping with some of these other things here. You know, as you guys are doing, you know, batching, GAF updates, up onto West River, whenever there's questions. One last thing to point out on, on page eight of the document that Monty sent out. So this is me draft, um, project inventory list for the next biennial, so 2021 to 2023, if you recall. You placed your FEMA, what, clean study on there. So, the application was submitted to the State Water Commission. We identified a, um, a potential study that Hazen might wanna, um, turn in and, or submit for and, and complete next biennial. We listed it as a fifty percent, or fifty thousand dollar study, and it's on the State Water Commission draft list here. Um, you'd be eligible for a sixty percent cost share on that project, as per their policy. So, beginning next year, you know, after legislature meets, probably, you know, April, May next year, if that's something that you guys want to take on, which would be to identify the project, identify the, uh, probably take it to about a ten percent design, figure out the land acquisition, preliminary data, cost maps, impacts, benefits, that, that would be something we could, uh, we could do at that time. Just showing you that you submitted your project, this is just page one, many pages that were sent out of the project, or of all the projects, and you guys are here on page one, it's deemed a high priority project, so you would get the sixty percent cost share of your project if, uh, if you reply for it, or if you ask for it. If you recall, your water supply project, the water tank, was a low priority project. For whatever reason, that's the way they classify them, all the high priority projects get preference, and then they move on to the, um, moderate level projects, and among the low level projects. So, um, that's just kind of the way that State Water Commission works. Any questions there?
No, thank you.
I won't really mention that much, I mean, I'll just leave it on this for future meetings, and if somebody has any questions, then ask about it, but it's just, it'll be a non-moving key for the whole thing for, you know, for quite some time. And that's really, and that's the end of my update for you guys. I plan to be in Hazen in two weeks for some meetings. I'm gonna probably just put together a quick map, send Monty, as far as some, uh, what the, you know, possible layout area, easement stuff needs for that, that tank site are. I'm not gonna go look for landlord, I'm not gonna do anything more than that, but I'll, um, just kind of get the map started, and get it kind of, um, squared away, so that, uh, we can visit about that maybe at the next meeting.
Okay, so do you think we should hold off on this temporary access easement and option of the purchase land agreement?
Well, I have to write a property description for, for your final purchase.
Okay.
Again, I don't know what, I don't know what that, um, excuse me, or, um, I don't know what Pat needs from me, other than that.
That's it?
Yeah. So the, the, I, I think you can proceed down that path, let them know that we intend to do it, and we're just, the engineers writing a property description, we're just gonna have a, you know, I'll, I'll probably send the one letter out, or visit with shipload, just to see what their thought is. And, uh, otherwise, we'll start narrowing it down to a footprint that, that everybody agrees to.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll pick up the line here, Gary, I can take about twenty minutes.
All right, perfect.
Great.
All right, so that's five B, then, this temporary access easement and option of purchase.
We'll take it over to the next meeting.
We'll post one, absolutely. That's, uh, these, if you do look at the, the granters have one, two, three, four signatures for it, and they've already all signed, so they're, they're fine. So, we'll just wait till the next meeting. Five C, ratification of home road charter amendment, and joint powers agreement for Hazen Park, with Hazen Parks and Rec.
Okay, as I said in the notes, based on the, the vote at the election in June, continuing the one and a half percent sales tax with a half a percent dedicated to Hazen Parks and Rec for maintenance and improvements, was passed quite handily. Uh, so we need to basically have a motion ratifying the amendment to our home road charter, charter to remove the sunset clause and continue that tax collection based on the same way it was set up, when it was initially set up. And then, since this doesn't directly involve the pool anymore, there is a new joint powers agreement, basically just between the city and Parks and Rec as far as collection of that, and then reporting of how they're using those sales tax dollars, at least by annually or twice a year.
Okay, so, um, to ratify this, we need to have a motion approval. So, motion by Pillar?
Second.
And second by Wolf. Discussion. So I guess, uh, or this agreement, it says that there's not gonna be a charge for, or I guess, like, your time involved in, and I guess, reporting?
Yeah.
How much time do you have?
We get the sales tax dollars in one, some on, it's just basically splitting it up and putting it in.
But it will be defined in that document as to how often we see what, what the money is ever used for.
Yeah.
Okay.
That one's in this one here. It's every half year.
Semi-annually.
Okay, perfect. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Pillar?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Hat?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Ovino?
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, that's on the ratification. Then if there's any questions or concerns with the joint powers agreement, do you approve it, or if you wanna wait to have the park district group their side? Guess it's up to you.
I don't know, I would need, like, if they take action or anything.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hat?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Ovino?
Aye. Motion carried.
All right, down to six A, requested citizens, please look in church, manhole. Uh, Mr. Link, come on up.
Okay, thank you. Most of you people are familiar with the area, and the, the, uh, the request is, this manhole is located in the southwest corner of the property of where the parking lot is in, in...
So it's ring dot? I thought there was the...
May I step up there?
Yeah, yeah, please.
It's right, right out here. Of course, the shift of the photos will be different, but it's over in the grass here. And the church is planning on, from about this point, all the way down, remove that concrete and regrade it. And our flow line, the design flow line of the gutter, is like, uh, about three feet to the east of the manhole, and it's two point seven feet, and so a six-inch gutter, it's gonna be two point two feet. And so the first thought is, we'd like to lower that manhole two point two feet to be even, the elevation, with the, uh, top of the, the curb. Now, the big catch there is, what's it gonna take to lower it? I have not looked in the manhole, 'cause I didn't have permission to look in the manhole. If there is a riser ring in there of about two point two feet, that, that would be great, 'cause all we, all that we've done is to remove that riser ring.
Or the bricks, you know?
Nope, it's concrete.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a concrete manhole. And, so, uh, until that is determined, and if, let's say that it's gonna be a, a five-foot section to remove... and if, let's say that it's gonna be a, a five foot section to remove and then recast a three foot section, well, I don't know about the pricing of that. And we may end up making the decision from the top of the manhole to the back of the gutter at, or the back of the curb at about a forty-five degree angle coming off that manhole. Don't really like that idea. It's, it's not that big an area and it's not that tough to weed either or anything. But when you put grass around it, it wouldn't look the nicest. That's up, that's up in the air, you know? If we would leave it at the present rim elevation and lower it two point two feet, economics is gonna take a little bit of that. Then the, the other request, and so that would be a request, if we're able to lower it, would you allow us to lower that manhole? The second request is we want to come around the corner on the southeast uh, part of the drive or right to the, the west side of Central Avenue on the north end. There's a private driving here and we'd like to remove that gutter, which is now city gutter in the Boulevard and tie in to the same existing elevation right there at that driveway. That would give us the maximum slope from up here down around to there. And we'd like permission to remove that gutter and reroute that, so, uh.
Jared, are you still on?
I'm on the phone, yep, I heard, I heard Ken.
Okay, all right. So Ken, right now, I, so I guess I'm, I thought that gutter was, how far, how much lower is that gonna have to be, I think? On that curve?
Uh, the city part?
Yeah.
I, I never, I, I do have the elevations, but I never compare. I'll, I'll tell you that. The, the driveway is like seventeen forty, one point five in elevation.
So you can just make, you can make it steeper through there, so it runs better?
No, not necessarily. That's pretty steep coming around.
I know, yeah.
No, we, we want to make it one gradual slope from seventeen forty-five to up at the north end. And it can, a constant slope all the way to the south, then turn east and south and tie in to the existing gutter at that driveway, the north edge of that driveway. And it, uh, the biggest part that we're having problems with is those big tree stumps, which is on church property. They have grown, that animal disease got after them a few years ago and we cut them all down. By golly, they're coming back. But the, the roots have heaved that driveway so bad that we can't clean the snow out in winter and it's a valley gutter. And then further to the west, the ground has settled. And so we're shooting, it's gonna be about a one point four percent slope. So in some construction settlement, hopefully we end up with a one percent drainage all the way through.
Hat.
Mr. President, um, what's the city own up there now, Ken? I know there was question about. Okay, I, if I can point at the screen again, Ken?
Yeah.
Well, the, the church owns from back in this area. And this here is just an old lot line, but they, the city owns across like this and comes on out. And it's just west of the manhole that sits over here in Central Avenue. And then, of course, it goes north.
Uh, the city owns?
No, that is church.
Oh, that's church property, church, so. We own half that road, pretty much, don't we?
So the, yeah, so the city, I know we talked about at one time getting an easement from the church for that roadway because we don't have. For this easement, is that correct?
We, we did, we, we talked about it when we did the road construction project. And I think we just came to the conclusion that we were leaving one up alone.
Yeah, we, we did the improvement of the street.
This might be a time to negotiate. I, I'm not a spokesperson on that subject, but I, I'd sell you this whole piece of property if you wanted.
Ken, when are you guys looking at doing this project and?
Oh, we're, we're looking at trying to bid late this fall.
Okay.
Maybe end of November, December. And if we can get everything settled by then, certainly in January and then have a two thousand twenty-one construction.
And did I hear you correct? You're looking for permission from the city to basically have whoever it is that you award this project to perform all of those, those, uh, those tasks?
Like lowering the manhole?
Yes.
That is correct. And removing that gutter and replacing, we have to rearrange that gutter loop bit on the curb. It, uh, we want to stay off the neighbor's property to the south.
The only thing I would say is whoever you award that to, they work with Jared at Moore Engineering and make sure that it, it's up to snuff with what our city engineers once sees. So other than that, I'd.
Okay.
Do we, do we have precedent on, on anything like this? Where, where we give somebody the, uh, the right to cut down a manhole or move curb, curb and gutter? I'm not looking to stand in the way, I'm just wondering if we've done anything like this before.
Normally a manhole's aren't done in private property.
Sure. No.
Yeah, this private property is an easement though. The city holds an easement on it, it's property of the city.
Jason, I would just think, I guess, uh, as long as, I guess, Moore, Moore, I guess, the future there, I guess, the signs off on it and see what you probably have.
I don't, I don't see a problem with it either. I was just curious if there was history.
They have some, I was using a standard curb design. If there's some other curb that they, the city would like to see on city property, I would need that detailed design drawing. And then if there's any particular specifications for if there's any kind of sealant on the joints of the manhole for that, I'd, I'd certainly like to have that from the city early on so I can incorporate that into the bid of the project.
I think, I think we link the two parties together, no, pun intended, and, uh.
Yeah, between Moore and the church and with Dave and the street department, I think that'd be, I don't see an issue. I wouldn't allow that improvement.
And do, do that right up front so that you're not coming up with a design, submit it and say, and they say, oh, no. You know, just have general conversation right away and see where that takes it.
Well, then we certainly like to have permission to take the old concrete out and haul it to the city salvage site for, for a fee. Yeah, we want to buy it, move it, move it out of there.
Jared, were you gonna mention something?
Yep, I'm on the phone, yep. So I heard, I agree with everything. We would like to see the plan. It's gonna have to be, you know, even a sketch or something from Mr. Link so we can see what's going on. What we would do then, you know, if you can lower a penetrator manhole by two and a half feet, I need to know how deep it is now so that we don't have any frost issues. A plan, a grading plan on that site because we have water service line, sewer service line, whatever, and we're gonna take any cover off of those. It could be susceptible to freezing. So, yeah, just, uh, a final site design submitted to the city. We'll review it. I'll provide all the specifications as far as what he had asked for. Not a problem. We'll review it when it comes in.
Okay, Jared does kind of like, uh, I know the manhole is deep. It, it maybe runs ten, eleven feet deep, but, uh, that's from looking at, I've never measured it. So my first opinion was taking off two point two feet wouldn't, wouldn't hurt it. And the cover itself, uh, it would only be there at the pipe, you know? And the city may want to review their, uh, if they have a videotape of that line from that manhole going north, if they feel they need to replace any of that sewer line. Because, yeah, when the concrete is out, the, uh, we had videotape from the service line inside the house out to the main. And when the camera got to the main, there was standing water in that sewer main. It was not flowing. We would see it flow and then it would stop, but there must be a low spot right about where that service line drops into the sewer. So it might be a good time.
Ken, are you taking the concrete out? How far north are you going with this church? All the way up to the Seventh Street or?
Oh, no, no.
How far are you going?
Only to where that little, uh, white shed is. There's, there's a control joint in there.
By the garbage cans, yeah.
On, on the south side of White Shed.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I think we should have a formal approval.
I'll make a motion with, with all of the conversation that we had, dialogue between the two parties and mutual agreement and approval on that, that we move forward with based upon approvals there that we allow church to move forward with the project.
Okay, we got a motion by Pillar?
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. I think that the next time we have PACE or pipe detectives in town doing camera work, we should, now, go up there.
We'll see when the last time that works.
Okay. Do you remember David Al?
I got, I got some areas to ask that I'll listen to you have on the dock.
Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovino.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, you bet, thank you, Ken. Seven A, uh, governing ordinance one point zero two zero two, special names of reorganization beings amendment.
Now, a visiting with Pat, based on century code, we don't have to conduct as a commission city, the reorganizational meeting on the fourth Tuesday of June. If we include it into our ordinances, we'll just have the reorganizational meeting, the first meeting after the election is certified, which will basically be your second meeting.
So it just becomes an action item that on our regularly scheduled meeting?
Exactly.
Okay.
So this would be your first reading of this ordinance amendment if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Wolf? Second, second by Stern, discussion. Matthew Casey?
So I just have a question on the time up there. Is that gonna change now to six thirty?
Oh, it's six thirty? Yeah, we should change that now with part of this, as part of this revision, yeah, change that. That's very old.
Yeah, one other thing is this carries no penalty, so there is no requirement of application. Okay, just a second reading.
All right, so that was just first read. Okay, uh, you need a roll call, Mark, do you need? No, all in favor? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you. Great. Seven B, chapter nineteen, taxation, number one.
Since, since the Home Rule Charter is being amended, we need to update the ordinance as well relating to the sales tax collection. Uh, basically this keeps it at the one and a half percent, but does remove the sunset clause that was originally in there. It includes the language relating to the joint powers agreement with the park district as well. Basically just cleaning up the ordinance after the vote.
If you think about structurally, your Home Rule Charter is your constitution. These are your laws. These are your statutes, so.
Let's hear you go. Did you take a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, motion by Hack. First read.
First read.
Second.
And second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Hat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovino.
Aye, motion carried, thank you.
Right, eight A, building permit with variance. For Joel Anderson, and Joel is sitting here.
Mr. Anderson is here. Uh, some pictures I sent out to you. These are the current structures on the lot that he is referring to. The plan is to construct the addition to the house plus an attached garage. And these structures would then be removed. Uh, the question was the variance since, you can see the property pin is right behind the curb on this photo, right back in here. And these would then be within the seven and a half foot side yard variance from the property line. As stated, there are currently buildings sticking out that far now, so it's, but it would still require approval of a variance.
But it wouldn't be further than that?
No, it would not be further, it would actually be a half a foot back the way, the way.
And those are disappearing.
And the buildings are disappearing, yes. The two that were there.
Anything you want to add, Joel? Or you don't want to, can't get your pickup into your garages?
I'm tired of not being able to work out there in the winter.
Yeah.
It would be nice to be in this project. I hope to be able to start within a few weeks if I get the banking organized, so I don't. We shall see if I can get it up before winter.
Any questions, Joel?
So with Marty on the ordinance now, it says how far above, set back?
Under zoning side yard is seven and a half feet.
So then?
We would basically be allowing a six, six and a half of variance.
Then, and the door is gonna be at the same side?
As the existing ride is, yes. Other reason I can't let set it back farther is because there is an addition they put on the house already. So only have so much room that could fit it in there without being a parked vehicle, so. They have a question on etiquette on cutting in the curb, the entrance for the garages. I've done that before, I, I did excavation embargo, but I didn't know what the rules are out here for cutting out curb and putting it into the entrance and stuff.
Basically there, that's a separate permit as far as doing curb and gutter work like that. And so long as you follow the specifications of our engineer, there's no problem with he doing that or our contractor doing that, whoever's doing it somewhere. Any sort of engineer's requirements, yeah.
Any wish to the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf, second, second by Stern, discussion. So then on this lot, is it just, I guess, like the width of it, fifty feet or?
Yeah. It's a little bit more than that, just a couple of extra feet on the, on the other, yeah, on the south side, yeah.
Very narrow.
Two, I guess, seven foot six space on the south side.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack. Miller.
Hi.
Open hour.
Hi, motion carried.
Alright, uh, eight B. Building permit. Variance with, uh, for Galen Jensen.
Uh, he's wanting to do a shed again. Remember last year he was talking about doing just a green bin type shed? This is the design there would be now. It comes before you because according to. Ordinants for planning and zoning, the. Structure is supposed to be similar in design and roof covering and everything as the home. So as you can see, based on this, it's more or less just a kind of a galvanized roof on the shed.
But actually it's clear plastic for like green house.
Oh, greenhouse. He said it would rust. So I don't know.
It's like, see through it.
I suppose all these different little seams will.
Rust, yeah.
As far as the lot size and spacing, there are no issues with the amount of yard that'll be covered. And it would otherwise not require any action by you because.
So the only kind of, this, only kind of, I guess, uh. One kind of, I guess, a variance if this needs, is just like due to the, uh, rough pitch?
Pitch and covering, yeah. Siding, yeah. Yeah, the siding will match his house.
Wolf to approve, thank you.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Stern, second by Hack, I'm sorry, by Miller. Discussion. Yeah, we have no back ways. Roll call.
I'm getting there. Stern.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Open hour.
Hi, motion carried, thank you.
Okay, then we have.
Yeah, the eight C.
Eight C. Permit for Hazelwood Sports. For a building, this building here.
This comes before this because of.
For me there.
It's a commercial building.
Refrigeration building and on the north side of the hockey rink.
What is it? How, how long is it, fifty minutes?
Forty by thirty-two is what this drawing shows. Is that different?
No, that's what that shows.
No, forty by thirty-two.
Where do we put the paddings in that? Just kidding.
And you said the door is gonna be on the same side as the existing. Entrance to the, yeah, north. Is it moving on the west side?
I'm not sure that that show.
No, there was no big N on there or anything, so. I would guess that the garage door would be on the west side to match the garage door that's already on that, for example.
So it'll be on the same side?
I would guess. I don't know what it will matter.
Are they gonna try and match up the siding with the best as possible, that's the plan?
That's my understanding. Application.
No, it's new construction. Pat.
Is the school party to the application?
They are not, but I know they might get a school board as far as approval to do it.
So they already have school board.
Did you receive the school board approval?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the building permit for this addition.
Motion by Miller.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Miller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Open hour.
Hi, motion carried.
Alright, Denver Reports. Water sewer.
It was mentioned the asphalt repairs have been performed on a couple of different excavations that we did in the city for leak repairs. Turned out really, really nice. It was kind of a joint effort with the contractors with West River, telephone and me. Did their repairs on Main Street. And I'm assuming we got the, the last of our repairs done on our garbage truck and all as well?
Uh, I thought the cargo right now, we're doing some hydraulic adjustments on it and, uh, one of the can tippers sprung a leak. We were gonna disassemble it and see what's leaking out. Haven't heard back. They had long weekend for the holidays, so should be able to call this week.
Okay, did, did they come and get it, take it?
I took it to Bismarck and then they picked it up there. They were delivering it in truck to the city of Bismarck, so they're gonna come for us and pick it up. So they will deliver it back there once done.
That's all we have.
Alright. Streets.
And what's reported, Stern?
Finance, investing. Thank you, police, fire.
I just have a report from Jim. Wolf, and they are still working on the junk vehicles. It looks like they have. Removed six from different locations. And they're still working on four of them that have, they're either working with or have been served. So.
This is a new list?
This is a list adds up six thirty. Is my understanding.
And what car has moved today?
Yep, one was moved today, I know six, yeah.
Great.
So they're working on them and that is all that I have.
Okay, eight C D.
Okay.
Okay, Dave, anything you wanna add?
Uh, finishing up on painting. I still just got a few days left, a couple handicap spots yet, uh. Little bit of yellow striping would have to be wrapped up here shortly.
He's doing an awesome job. Thank you.
Jared, Wolf, I have to ask you. I did talk to Mike this afternoon. He's got to double line from Maine all the way down to Rogers. Should we leave the construction area or should we go ahead and double line that as well? Uh, he, he just asked me if there's gonna be more heavily.
I thought we was gonna leave some of that till the end or whatever.
And that's what I told you.
They're gonna have so they don't heat it off of it right away.
Yeah, yeah. It works.
I think that's, that's a good decision.
There's a few others. Yes, that's, that's kind of what I told Mike too.
Great, thank you. Alright, down to eleven A. Board appointments.
Um, I showed him a notes. I got one more person to sign up for planning and zoning, Mr. Hop.
Leland Hop, yep, good. And Mike's still working on Forest Street.
Mike is still working on Forest Street. As mentioned at the rare reorganizational meeting, Casey said he'd be willing to serve on planning and zoning as well. I will put two of you commissioners on this one. I didn't wanna do that.
Take turns.
I don't know if you want to approve anymore at this point.
Two doesn't constitute a forum, so.
Wolf, true. I think you leave it like that then. That's, uh, so let's approve. Planning and zoning then, motion.
So moved. And we're doing both, right? Are we doing just Leland or Casey also? Okay.
And Casey.
If you want.
And Casey, if that's right. Okay, great. Motion by Wolf.
Second A.
Second by Miller. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
I will vote.
Okay, open hour.
Hi, motion carried, thank you.
Twelve A, sidewalk driveway estimate repairs for EC that's.
This was up on Elwood Drive, uh, if you remember when they had the water break in the main or wherever, I think it was in the main.
It was between curb stop and the main, yeah.
Yeah, uh, we did get an estimate from Mr. Lee. For Winkler Construction, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to repair the sidewalk and portion of the driveway. Um, Mr. Meisner dropped off an estimate this morning. Based on specifications that we've given them, his estimate is for one thousand two hundred dollars to make these repairs. And those are the only two we received.
So a hundred and fifty dollar difference. Dave, you, you worked with both these guys and one done a better job than the other on this type of project?
No, I would say they're well, well, same quality type work.
Okay.
Both of them. When they have questions, they both were called and asked, so they're both easy to work with.
Okay, make a motion, we accept a little bit from Meisner and Stern.
Okay, motion by Miller. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Miller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Open hour.
Hi. Motion carried.
Okay, approval of bills. Ken, don't need it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Open hour.
Hi, motion carried. Name and adjournment, thank you.